Okay, so welcome to the December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendants by board commission members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards Quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you will need to use a link on the agenda or download the Zoom application. And create an account or use one of the call-in numbers listed on the agenda. While conducting meetings remotely, we will endeavor to keep the meeting operations as close to our standard procedures as possible. However, use of this platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio. Public participants will join the webinar as attendee, meaning they are muted and with no video feed from them. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public can be recognized by using the raised hand function. Found under participants from Zoom. Or make a request with the Q and A function. If you are joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. A few other notes on page two of the agenda, but we're going to get started. With a roll call, Wolf.
Present.
Cadem.
Here.
Besson.
Present.
Kid.
Present.
Okay, great, okay, let's see. So our first agenda item is MBTA zoning, planning and zoning board update. We have a updated schedule for public hearings and information sessions. And some other notes that Stephanie could share with us.
Sure, you'll find in the second page of the binder. Matrix that shows the zoning critical dates and events. So what we did. Bob, Peter and I met with Connor, the town administrator and Dottie Flutinidi, the chair of the select board and talked about. The process going forward and dates and we put this together so everyone would know and we can publish this on the website. Which we've done. So I just want to go over the meetings. The first line is the goal, which is May twentieth, town meeting, where we're hoping the town will vote to adopt the MBTA zoning. So I'm going to jump to the bottom of the page. December eighteenth, that's today, the planning board meeting and we're updating the planning board on the proposed schedule for the public engagement. On January tenth, which is a Tuesday. We're going to, the board will be discussing and seeking public input on North Washington and the Belmont, Washington districts. And the reason for doing that on a Tuesday is so that we can do it in person. And have the Corona meeting room, which allows for hybrid participation. So if there are in particular members of the board. That won't be able to attend in person, they can attend via Zoom link. On January twenty-fifth, which I think I talked about at the last meeting, we are planning a. Furnace Village Neighborhood Collaborative Sherret or Public Input Session. And this is going to be with the residents from the Foundry Street area. And it's going to be held in the Gaslight Village Community Room, which is being booked for us. And that meeting, Peter and I will definitely be in attendance. And if there's one other board member that would like to attend, that's encouraged. All board members don't need to attend and in fact, if we do have more than two attending, then it would have to be posted as a public meeting. January twenty-ninth, the planning, again, we're going to meet in the Corona meeting room and. There'll be an update on the public engagement meetings, briefing the board in particular on the Furnace Village Neighborhood Collaborative Meeting. And then on February twelfth. The board again in the Corona Room meeting to review and finalize the districts. On the twenty-seventh, which is another Tuesday, meeting at Frothingham Hall for final public comment. And then on March twelfth, which is also another Tuesday. This will be either Zoom or in person in the Corona meeting room. And that will be deliberation and close the hearing and vote. Throughout December and April. We are scheduling presentations to the various boards in across town. The municipal boards and I've listed all of those there. Also have already started seeking. Asking to get on their agendas and have received a good response so far. So as soon as I get that calendar finalized, I will share that with everybody and that will also be posted on the web page.
Okay, great, thank you. It was a lot of work lining all, all those meetings up, so kind of arranging the, the meeting rooms is kind of the hard part, right, sometimes, so.
It was definitely the hardest part. And just so that we could have it so that if board members, you know, could not attend in person, we could do the hybrid meeting.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions on that schedule?
Stephanie, I think January ten is a Wednesday, not a Tuesday.
I, Amos, you are correct. Sorry, I will make that correction.
So is the nine?
No, it's the tenth and that's because we, we couldn't even get the Frothingham Hall. Either the eighth or the ninth, we were out of luck, so.
All right, nice work there, Amos. So Stephanie, what else did we have kind of like out there? Were we going to maybe just kind of look back at any other possible traffic studies that had been done? In the area and just kind of get some information together at least.
Yes, we'll be pulling a lot of information together. Greg Swan is reaching out to a consultant to do some traffic analysis for us. I've also requested crash information along Foundry Street from the police department, which I have. Both looking back five years from the time Avalon was built and then looking forward the next five years since Avalon has been built. Wayne is working on getting student enrollment numbers and we will be looking at getting some other financial information. To help answer some of the questions and address some of the concerns that have been raised.
Okay, and as a kind of an output of our, maybe our several, our board meetings and other discussions. It seems that, you know, we're keeping the three different zones as viable options for now. Probably looking more towards like the lower end of the required. Units, you know, as required by the state, whether we had had some kind of discussion. Discussing the merits of more or just enough. So we were thinking more like on the, on the lower end there. And. In light of that, we might just kind of to be ready as we wait for the state to review what we've already submitted. Kind of just, you know, make sure that our, our numbers that we had reviewed as far as the modeling goes. Are accurate, up to date for the different kind of possibilities with the different zones.
And then Peter, just another piece of information. So we'd been waiting to hear back. From the housing and livable communities on the. Communities that have already adopted the zoning and submitted their zoning for compliance verification. They have approved Lexington's and I can't remember the other community off the top of my head. But Lexington's zoning, the language is what we based ours on and both have been approved, no comments, no changes. So I think that bodes well for us.
Okay. Sounds like we're on our way to being compliant with the state law.
It's been, it's been a lot of work and the board's put in a lot of time and thought. And more.
Okay, so are there any public questions there? Any other comments? See if I can get my Zoom to expand here and see if there is anything.
No, I don't see. The one person with their hand raised is the person that is on for Weber Farm. That's the contractor.
Okay, in that case, we have a few continuances here, but we'll start off, just go down the agenda. First being two sixty Massapog Avenue Special Permit Estate Lot. And I believe Michael O'Shaughnessy is in attendance. Nope, he was, oh, here he is.
Yep, he should be popping up.
Hello, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Michael O'Shaughnessy. My office is in Middleborough, Massachusetts.
Okay, welcome. Do you have some updates on the project?
If you recall, Mr. Chairman, the last time I was here about a month or so ago, I think we had gone through the, the changes that we proposed. I think Stephanie had said she was okay with the project going forward as a pre-existing use. And the board had some, some comments. At that time, I don't think Mr. Mr. Stetson had Mr. Meeting and was going to be filing. His Mullins Certificate, which I believe has been done. That way we would have a full board to vote on this. This past week, I've been working through a draft decision with Stephanie. I, I think it said a good point. The one thing I did request when I was going through it with her was an opportunity. If the owner of the property wanted to pave the driveway. In the future that they would be allowed to and not prohibited by the permit. And Stephanie had added a comment, it had to comply with mass stormwater standards in, in the town of Easton Stormwater Regulations as well, which we have no issue with. Other than that.
Oh, we lost power.
Uh-oh. Well, she's back. Did you have more there? She's back.
No, other, other than that, the plan hasn't changed since the last time you folks have seen it.
Okay, sorry, we just lost power for about five seconds there, so. I'm back.
Yep, okay, so on your request on the decision for the paving, the stormwater requirement is only if and when it were paved, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Right now it's existing, we're approving, we're approving the existing, but within the special permit language, it would.
That's right.
State that. What else did we have in the special permit? We had that there'd be a dedicated, well, well, there's a, there's a hydrant going in, so does the special permit indicate that? Is actually going to be like a water line or is it just a new? A new water service from the street to the, to the new home?
The, the, the language in the draft decision said the proposed house on lot two shall have a dedicated water line.
Okay. And how are you, how are you going to run water to the, to the hydrant? Does that run off one of the existing water lines?
They'll come off the existing water line, yes.
Okay, I mean, the fire department didn't review their plans, so. Okay, are there any questions about the special permit decision draft?
I think, and I, and I didn't hear if Mr. O'Shaughnessy mentioned these as conditions while the power was out and. I was in total darkness. But there is also language in there about the maintenance of the gravel drive. And. We had the water line in there. And, and let's see, and we had a condition that we need the maintenance. Responsibility memorialized in a recorded instrument and that prior to issuance of a building permit. The applicant will provide a draft of that and town council will have the opportunity to review that on behalf of the board.
Yep, and as far as like the, kind of the buffering or the landscaping on the, was it the northern side of the? Like the kind of the front of the new lot, was that on the plan or is that going to be in the, in the decision?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that, we, we had added that to the plan the last time we had met. That was a request to the neighbors, so we had, we had no problem.
Yeah, I thought so. Are there any other questions or comments here? Does not sound that way. The neighbors had been around, but let's see if they're here. Nope. We'll have some hands raised, but no comments.
Okay, we have Matt Raafeld, who has his hand raised.
Hi, this is, sorry, I'm at the elementary school here. This is Matt Raafeld, two sixty-two Massapog Avenue. I just wanted to make sure that we still had those. Easements, you know, three houses off of a shared easement addressed. And if we're not going to consider that, you know, a shared driveway, I just wanted to find out if we were moving mailboxes. To the, you know, the, the easement, I guess, what we call the easement, or. Will trash pickup now be at the end of my driveway or will it be at the end of the shared driveway or whatever we're calling it now? So just trying to figure out how to, how to use the local services if we change this from a shared driveway to whatever we're calling it now.
But it, it's not really changing, is it, Mike?
No, nothing's changing. No, no, we're not, we're not taking any, any rights. The, the people who currently have rights will continue to have those rights to access that, that parcel of land. But it's. If mailboxes are in a certain spot, they'll remain in a certain spot as will the, the trash and recycling pickup.
Okay, and the trees that fell down today, are they going to be removed or are they? You know, I mean, the, these are the kinds of things that we don't really have any, any kind of faith in the. You know, the builder, unfortunately, because it's been over two months since we've asked for a meeting with them and they've decided not to contact us.
I, I, I have no idea where the trees may have fallen, if they've fallen.
No, I mean, just trees in general. There were trees that fell down today during the storm and there have been trees in the past that have fallen and I've never heard anything from. Mr. Zola or any member of his trust. To try to maintain that easement. I just want to make sure that if they're going to claim to own it and, and use it, which I know you own it, but. If you're going to maintain it, we need to actually have a real plan to maintain it, like you guys have already mentioned.
That would be, that would be a little more.
That was the goal, right?
Right, yeah. Under the agreement.
Exactly, so.
Anyone to do anything, but yeah.
That's fine. As long as, as long as, if it's, as long as it's already been. You know, brought to everybody's attention that it's a shared driveway with three people with access to it already. That's the only comment we had.
Yeah, and it's really a, an easement, a right-of-way easement. Is that not correct, Mike? And if you have. Have a right of passage over it and a tree falls and it doesn't get cleared, I would imagine you have the right to clear. The road so that you can have access.
And if I may, we, we actually added that in my discussions with Stephanie that you, you, you folks would continue to have whatever. Easements rights you would have in addition, the, the right to repair and maintain in case something didn't get done. Quickly enough for whatever reason. So if you needed to get to your house and a tree was down, you could go cut the tree up and move it wherever.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's all. I just, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. I appreciate the board and your help, Mr. O'Shaughnessy.
Yep, I wonder if, if we could, if we could share where we are on, you know, with the. With the decision, with, with the, any of the butters who would, who have, you know, come to the meetings and, you know, express some comments about the road itself.
So do I have it up if you want me to share it now or are you asking if we can email it to them?
I'm not sure what is, what does everyone else think? I mean, when, you've been working, we've been working on this this week, right? This decision?
Yes.
So I think it would be a reasonable idea. To, to share that with anyone so that they have time to review it and perhaps they have. You know, someone else that, that they would, you know, ask to review that to make sure that it's protecting their interests, you know, in their existing, whatever they have there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think there's a condition in there that actually does that. I don't know if you folks have it up.
I do. Can I, do you have it? I can read it or you can read it?
I, I, whatever's easier, Stephanie, I don't mind reading it.
Okay. So it's condition number six, the owners of the properties currently numbered two sixty-four R. Massapog Avenue and two sixty-two Massapog Avenue. Presently maintain the existing driveway for access to their respective properties at their sole cost and expense. And as a condition of this special permit, shall continue to have the right to maintain the driveway as may be improved. At their sole cost and expense for the purpose of maintaining the existing access to their properties. This shall be memorialized by a recorded instrument, which shall be submitted to the planning and zoning board for review and approval as deformed by town council. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for lot two.
Does anyone have any questions on that? Does that sound sufficient to. Memorialize what we're talking about here?
It, it does for me. It sounds like the driveway is, is able to be repaired, but we don't. Have to repair it, but it's still a driveway according to what you just wrote there.
Okay. In that case, I, we haven't closed this public hearing since we've been, you know, asking for more information still. Stephanie, do you think, can you think of anything else that we need to go over?
Oh, no, no, I think, I think that the board has, the applicant has responded to all the board's comments and concerns as, as well as the neighbors.
Okay, in that case, we have, we'd have a few votes coming up. The first would be to close the public hearing if that's what the applicant's representative would, would like.
I, I would like that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to close public hearing. Cadem.
Second, Stetson.
Okay, are there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Cadem.
Aye.
Besson.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
DeShane, aye. That passes. Now, I guess we could combine a motion to what, to approve the, the special permit and the. And the site, we usually approve a special permit and the site plan or they're all just in one as part of the special permit?
You can do it separately or both.
Right, but it's kind of like two items, right, so.
Yes, yes, so it should, I mean, you should. Either vote them together specifically or each individually.
Yeah, so we have a motion to do something with the special permit as well as the, as the site plan review.
Motion to approve the site plan as well as the special permit for two sixty Massapog Avenue. Stetson.
Cadem, second.
Okay, all in favor, Wolf?
Aye.
Kid. Oh, Kathy Kid?
Aye.
Oh, okay, I heard Cadem said aye. Stetson?
Aye.
DeShane, aye. All right, that passes. I think that's, that's all you need here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your holidays. Thanks for your time. Have a good night, guys.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, Mr. Raafeld. We appreciate your, your participation here.
Thank you as well.
Peter, while you do the next three continuances, I'm going to step away and see how Suzanne's doing because. When the power went out, she seemed to have lost connection.
Yeah, you have to restart, things like that. Okay, I'm sure. All right, so we have a few easy ones here. We have. Let's see, the continued public hearing for the one forty-nine Lincoln Street, Carter Estates is being continued to January eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to continue. Stetson.
Okay. Sign language is acceptable, but I'll try to just stick with the usual protocol here so I don't get confused. I, I have to jump back and forth between pages here. All right, so I'm all in favor, Cadem.
Aye.
Both.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Besson.
Aye.
All right, DeShane, aye. That passes. Next, we have another continued public hearing that's being continued. Five twenty-three Foundry Street Special Permit Makes to Use being continued to January eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to continue, Stetson.
Cadem, second.
Okay, all in favor, Cadem.
Aye.
Besson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Shane, aye. All right, and. One other continued public hearing that's being continued. Also to January eighth, two thousand twenty-four. This one is the definitive subdivision, special permit residential compound at one sixty-five Ein Street.
Motion to continue, Stetson.
Cadem, second.
Okay, all in favor, Wolf?
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Stetson.
Aye.
Cadem.
Aye.
DeShane, aye. Okay, Suzanne, all those, Stephanie and Suzanne, all those votes to continue to January eighth passed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now we have Weber Farm Architectural Review Lot Eight, JAD Builders, Inc. And I think we had someone raising their hand for this one. Okay, Mr. Bowman, once here, Mr. Donato, whoever wants your promoted, you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Jim, you need to unmute.
There you go.
Hello, we can hear you now, so please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jimmy Donato, JAD Builders in one twenty Precinct Street, Middleborough, Mass.
Okay, great, thanks. So you have some, some architectural plans for us to review. Do you have the. Functionality to share your screen and share those plans with us?
I do not. I think I dropped everything off with Stephanie and Suzanne, I believe.
Yep.
Yep, yeah, sure.
I didn't, I, I, I didn't know I needed them here else I would have. This is new to me, so. I'm trying to do everything.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, Stephanie will share these, you know, kind of going forward if you're going to kind of do, do some of these with us. Maybe, maybe I'd be ready for that next time. We'd appreciate that. Thanks. Has to jump between applications.
Yeah.
All right, cool. So what do you have here? What is the siding material?
The siding material is hottie plank. And then I have metal roofs where you see on that front porch on, on maybe the apron right above the garage doors. All PVC trim. I learned my lesson from the affordable I built, so I know exactly what everyone's looking for now. But all architectural shingles, my windows are from Harvey's or Lansing, because Harvey's was sold, but they're still Harvey windows. PVC deck composite decking. So everything that compares to the other houses that are in the subdivision.
And you're showing like the window panes on these elevations, the windows, will they have window panes?
Yeah, they're, they're four over four. The back shows six over six, but that's how the, the gentleman drew the plans, but they're all going to be. If you look on the other side of the elevations, they're four over one. They have a little more farmhouse look than your average six over six grills.
Okay, and then the, the front porch, you know, the railings and everything, that, that PVC is that you mentioned?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep. No vinyl siding. I built this house before. It's a nice looking farmhouse. And I think Stephanie got all the engineering this morning, too.
Okay, and do we have the, kind of the, the more exact, like, location of this home?
I think that I, so I didn't realize that wasn't part of what came last week.
No, that was only a rendering, Stephanie. It shows the exact locations and the sidelines and the setbacks. That was attached to the plans, too. I think Susan uploaded them.
Right, but if we, we send out the binder on.
Oh, there it is, right there.
There it is, okay. There we go. So this is, you can see that, Peter and everybody.
So it fits pretty good on the lot.
All right, and is that, that buffer is still intact? For most part?
Yes, sir, yep.
All right, and, and where was lot eight? Is that, I'm guessing, was it back on the left or the, or the right?
It's on the right of the affordable. It's not, it's, it's too over, obviously. It's on the right of the affordable. It's not, it's um it's two over, obviously.
So as you come in, if you follow the road around the cul-de-sac. It'll end up being on your right hand side, correct?
After the last house, you got the lot that's in between those two houses, that's six. Then you got seven, it's the next house after the last existing house.
Peter, if you want to see the full plan, I can bring that up, the lot.
No, that's okay. That's where I pictured it. I was just kind of seeing if I'm testing my memory, I guess. Okay, um does anyone else have any?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind a refresher if you could show me.
Yeah, hold on, let me um. Actually, you know what? Um I'm going to close. That because I think it will be faster if I go here.
Oh yeah, that would be nice if we all had that local folder, just to like click right through everything we probably uh.
Okay, and so this, which what number again? It's number eight?
Yes.
So it would be right here, Bob.
And what, the the affordable is on the other corner? It's hard for me to see. Oh, right there, okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you, that's that's helped.
We we should probably um kind of get an update on like the on like the, you know, the public access easement to the to the to the rear there now that. Um you know, time goes by sometimes, so at least maybe um get an update, maybe think towards the spring towards. Um you know, having that seen that opened up. It might just be, I mean, maybe there's still construction going on. I guess it's only really half built so far, right? So.
Well, there's, I think, three more.
Hmm, three more? Oh, yes, so you're you're on your way. Um so. Yeah, once once the roads are a little more cleaned up, right, then we could for the looking at the spring, we could. Look to get that uh the public um access and some of any other details like that kind of kind of wrapped up. Um but as far as this architectural review goes, um does anyone have any comments on on that? Do we need to say anything else?
Both in here.
Yeah, um would anyone like to uh?
Peter, are you talking about public access to the open space?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I actually haven't been down there in a little while, so I guess, you know, um maybe you have Stephanie just to kind of see. See where we are. It sounds like they're moving along pretty quickly and um. They usually treat the uh the homeowners pretty well, so I can imagine that will um. They continue to uh to kind of make that um neighborhood ready.
Steph- Stephanie. Uh following our conversation of having members of the board help you go to this uh. Uh projects and look uh adherence to the decisions. Uh eh it falls into that category, so eh not not in the winter, but. Maybe a certain point, we probably should go there and and visit.
Sure, um.
And I I volunteer if you.
Yeah, yeah, we can either do site visits or we just spread the work around and someone can take kind of take over a project as there are things to um to you know, to do more of that. Kind of onsite work, um so. Uh I don't mind going out in the winter anyways, but um okay, great idea.
Is it, it also eh Peter, is is a way to ensure that there is conformance to the decision we make? Because things can go. As not exactly as we decided.
Um yes, yeah, yeah, so you know, um so it's I think between the uh you know, the planning um department and the building inspector. Um you know, we have a lot of oversight there. Um things do sometimes um you know. Fall through the crashes like they do for anyone, um you know.
Yeah, no, and.
Um that's doing uh multiple jobs all the time, but um. Yeah, so but also right, I mean, we're uh planning board members and it's it's our oversight as well, um so uh we can contribute as as much as as we'd like to. I think that's why we bring these up and, you know, kind of make a few notes to kind of keep on track with some of those those items, but yeah, you're right.
Okay, so the board needs to vote to approve.
Mo- motion to approve uh Weber Hammer Architectur Review Lot Eight.
Second, Stetson.
Okay, um let's see. All in favor, Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Stetson?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Okay, um DeShane, I that passes. Alright, thank you, James.
I appreciate all your help. Have a great evening. And um I'll learn next time how to upload those on my own too.
Okay, well, yeah, give it a shot, you know.
That was some our error in the office, where we were trying to get these in for you and it was this morning when I went, oh. I don't think we asked Jim if he knew how to share his screen and everything.
I don't, but I'll learn. Once you tell me six or ten times, I'll pick it up for sure.
Yep, yep. Sounds good. Alright, thank you. Have a nice night.
Yeah, enjoy your evening and have a good Thanksgiving Thanksgiving. Have a good Christmas.
You too.
Good night, everybody.
Stephanie, if you can teach the people how to uh use the feature of uh. Eh editing and marking the the plan.
That would be, yeah, that will be.
Well, we're we're just trying to get them to share their screen first of all. Yeah, before there's another pandemic, you just want to make sure we can at least share this.
You wanna crawl before you walk, before you run, but.
Okay. Alright, okay, uh so we have a variance um of Z B A request for comment variance six twelve Washington Street. I think most of us know the idea of these right now. This is um uh. Variants that's going before the Board of Appeals and as a planning board, um. The Board of Appeals solicits our um our opinion. Um so we can support something or not support or make a few comments or have no comment.
I will remind the board that this is um what they're proposing is it it looks like to um. To reconstruct. A new facility um on the existing lot. And it would require site plan approval as well as the variance that they're seeking from the Board of Appeals. It's an expansion of their operation.
Right, so they decide to go to the Board of Appeals first, and if the Board of Appeals um responds favorably, then it would come to us for a site plan review.
Yes.
Just reading this again.
How much larger is the structure, Stephanie?
Oh, you know, this, I I had did not have time, a lot of time to look the plan over. Um. Yes, let me share this. It, so right now, you can see the um. Slashed area here is the existing one-story structure. Then they have a separate garage here. And then they have some shipping containers and what they want to do is it's substantially larger. It's a a little more than double what they already have there. Because this is um. The outline of the building that they're proposing to reconstruct. And they'll be moving a lot of the operation inside. I I don't know if. People go by there a lot, but you do see a lot of vehicles. I mean, it's fairly neat. But it it definitely um it's a lot with really no open spaces.
Now, on this plan, the the right, the front is to the to the left, is that what we're looking at here? By the way around?
I'm sorry, I don't think I.
Oh, which which side? Uh I think maybe I just don't see the full screen here. Where's where's Washington Street on?
On uh to the right here. Let me, I'll.
Oh, it is. Okay, because you know, they do have a. So right now, they have like a drive alley kind of along the left.
Sorry, I'm wrong, it is.
Right, because they have a drive alley on one side. That's why I was picturing, I was imagining that little that on the one on the bottom looked very small. Okay, so that's CBS there on the, okay. Yep.
Uh this is further south than CBS. This is so this is Plymouth.
Yeah, oh, sorry, I mean Dunkin' Donuts, yeah, my bad, right, yeah, okay. Dunkin' Donuts and Verizon and around that corner there.
I'm sorry, this is a little confusing.
No, I've got it now. Is everyone is everyone oriented here? Um. Um the CBS and the Verizon store, um.
Yeah, so you don't even really, I guess what you're you're getting at, Peter, is you don't even really see the back from the street. The way that it's configured.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, yeah, so like the front of the building on the Wash- Washington Street side has a, you know, a couple of bay or two like where people, they pull the cars in. And then this left side in the front has like some cars either for sale or that they're just kind of doing whatever they're doing there that. Um they already had approved for for selling vehicles. And then there is a lane on that, on the. That's the north side, the um Dunkin' Donuts Verizon side, the way. There's space for like a vehicle to drive around back. And what Stephanie's saying is that they're enlarging the building. Um it's. You know, it's going from what, five foot something to six feet off that property line, but it is. It's being enlarged and it's non-conforming also that the frontage is insufficient and I don't know if they mentioned. Looks like the setback is is fifty, but maybe not. What is that setback?
The setback, I believe, so this is Washington Street, right? And the setback, they don't even have it marked here. Again, um you know, the plans. The Board of Appeals spends less time going through the details of the plans than we do, so. I would expect when we receive it for site plan review, they need to show that setback, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was just kind of just.
This is thirty-two feet here, so you can see it's probably ninety.
It's about, no, it looks like it's something, well, something shows a hundred and twenty-five down there at the bottom, so yeah, that's.
Right there, there it is, you're right.
Okay, I have to go on screen.
Stephanie, the the street view is very good. It gives a very good feeling. I can share, I have.
Yes, yeah.
You want me to share?
I'll stop sharing and you can share that.
Uh no, I can't. I have it on the other computer. But you do six twelve Washington Street, there is a beautiful picture that shows. The shop on the back and the parking on the front.
Okay. Alright, we we believe you. No, I I I I know it well enough that I can I can picture this. So, alright, yeah, so they're really just like enlarging this um pre-existing non-conforming uh structure and use, right? That's that's the big deal here.
Right, and the chart shows that basically, so. There's a lot size, the lot size requirement is twenty-five thousand square feet. They're providing twenty-five thousand four hundred fifty-nine. And as I said, it's substantially um all paved in that front area. The frontage is one hundred and twenty-five feet. It remains at seventy-three point six five. Um which is what they have versus what's required. And then the. Side yard setback is twenty-five feet. Um currently, it's five point three feet and they're proposing. So you gain about seven tenths of uh. Of a foot.
Okay, and then I think in the back there, that's like the the back area, that's where the really where the expansion is, that's that's the Patriot Investment Corp, which I think is the uh the Patriot um. Transportation that you see on the on the others, on the north side as well. That's the like van drivers, like the like kid van type of type things.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I believe so.
Because there's not another, there's not another home back there, so. Like say like number six Randall Lane isn't really noticing much of a difference, except that there's more of a building back there, like, you know. Um so. Yeah, what does everyone think? Is this a a good idea or a bad idea?
It's it's important. I mean, it sounds like it's a it's a better man. It's a commercial thoroughfare. They can put more stuff inside. I think that's probably a benefit for the neighbors even.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
What I see here on the street view.
Yeah, I mean, the thing I don't know is like if if they're, you know, are they, if they're increasing, and this is more like site plan related, right? But if they're increasing the impervious area, does that require any other kind of waivers from us or is it?
They they need to comply with stormwater management, its redevelopment. To the maximum extent practicable, any area that's not um impervious would be subject. Entirely to the stormwater management standards. Um. Generally, so I I don't know what they have on site. They're not showing any stormwater components, but again. They probably just prepared this for the Board of Appeals, who doesn't look at that um level of detail. And of course, we would and we would require a peer review. They would need to provide some. Um type of stormwater management plan.
Mm-hmm.
I I would assume that the health department also for septic system and bathrooms and whatever they are doing. It's part of the plans, they need to conform.
They would, um so this is sewer. I know, so they would be um right, this is north of the Brook.
Is it, is it gone all the way to there? I think it's stopped on the corner there.
The sewer, I think, this is north of the Brook. The the sewer doesn't go over Queezit Brook. And I think this is.
The Brook is after, like the the Brook is north of DeAngelo's and this is north of that.
Right.
It 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 is included, okay. I don't remember them digging here.
Um, yep. Well, um okay, I mean, there are any other comments? We could we could recommend this or not have any comment or just have a few suggestions, whatever, whatever you guys think.
I'd recommend it. I'd motion to recommend, Stetson.
Second, Wolf.
Okay, um all in favor, Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Stetson?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye. It's it's in line with the development of this area, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, my, I mean, it'll probably look better once they, you know, make a new building anyways, right? So, yeah. Or add to the existing building as it may be. Um well, that's really kind of the end of our regular kind of um agenda items. We do have uh some meeting minutes from the December fourth. Um did everyone have a chance to take a look at those? Did you have any comments or or changes?
I'm I'm okay with it.
As was I.
Same, motion to approve, Stetson.
Kaden, second.
Okay, um all in favor, Stetson?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Okay, um DeShane, aye.
Actually, can I, I'm sorry, I just voted yes, but there was one little thing at the very end. Um it has um. Kid as approving, but Kathy missed that meeting. I think she meant that um Joanne on the last one where it was um on the minutes.
Alright, wait, actually, there is a formal way to do this, to recall what we just voted on, so let's just try to remember how to do it, um but I'm not recalling it.
Sorry, this is a teachable moment.
That's okay, um you could make a a motion to amend um the the uh the vote we just took.
Alright, can I make a motion to amend the vote we just took by replacing uh Kid with Zigmond in the very last page of the minutes?
Okay.
Second, Stetson.
Alright, um all in favor, Wolf?
Aye.
Stetson?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Kid?
Aye.
Alright, DeShane, aye. Alright, good catch. Thanks, Mickey. Um share report, um I think really like the MBTA zoning was um was the kind of the. The big uh the share report piece, uh where um we kind of got a few things kind of lined up um for the next couple of months. Uh Stephanie, do you have any other updates?
N- not really. Um I can, what I can tell you is that um Sawmill. Which uh you know, for the longest time, they've been focused on the site work and laying in the road, getting the utilities in. And they are in the process of starting to sell houses, so we would expect them to start constructing. And they are in the process of starting to sell houses, so we would expect them to start construction. The light, which everyone's interested in, the traffic light. Has been delayed in large part, we're told, because they can't get National Grid there. Um they're having trouble even getting them in um for the permanent. Power for housing. Um they'll be able to use temporary. They they do have a pole there that will allow them to bring temporary service um while they're constructing, but. Um it's been very difficult, so we're we're hoping to break through that.
So, but that was for the, I mean, uh we had some discussions indicated that like the, we're looking at the spring for that anyways, that would be done by the spring, was that?
Hmm, no, the hope and intent was for it to have been done um over the summer.
Okay, like two thousand twenty-three, yeah.
What I've been told by um Mr. Lincoln is that if the weather holds, even if it gets cold and it. Grid comes back, what they're waiting for is the exact location, and I guess there are all kinds, there's all kinds of paperwork and contracts that. Need to be entered into between the uh con- the developer and grid. Um but if they get all of that done and the weather holds, um the light has been ordered. It's not in yet, but as soon as it is in, then they could start installation even over the winter. But.
Yeah, and and who's responsible for, say, on on this project, who's responsible for like doing all the work with National Grid? Is it is it the developer or the town?
It's the developers um part, but if if we can, you know, we're we're looking to see if maybe there's a call that can be made to try to. Uh push things along.
Yep. Yeah, okay, that's great. That would probably be, yeah, yeah, I'm good. So thanks for the update on that.
I I just wanted to mention that across the street, the houses built there are beautiful. They really improve the looks of the neighborhood significantly. The three new, the the uh the the old house that was uh worked on and then two new. Units there across the street are really, really nice.
Yeah, it really, it really brings life to that area.
Yeah, and if anything, it kind of maybe in a way it kind of shows where like you can. You can think of like maybe in certain areas, like like having like a smaller lot size requirements, right? And it you can still have a nice, end up with a nice product that doesn't look like too too compact and dense, right? I mean, those. However, that worked out, maybe we left out, always had the right person doing it, but. It's not like they tried to squeeze like as big of a house as possible on all those lots, right? I mean, they're they're nice houses, they're good sized, but they. But they seem to fit with the with the the neighborhood, and so that that worked out well.
Yeah, also across the street, the CPC is struggling with the Swift Park, so there is park. That wants to be put exactly on there in front of the entrance of the the complex. And uh I hope we find a solution to make it happen. Uh because.
I do, too.
It's very important for that corner to.
What are what are the what are the primary struggles, the causes of the struggle?
Cost.
Us. So um so thank you, Amos. That's a good introduction. So Swift's Park, um. I a committee was formed, a steering committee for that project was formed about two years ago. Um and then we've been working with BSC on a design for the park. A very nice design, but some of the features are a little pricey. We're working on getting that price down. We're meeting with um one of the members. And tomorrow, and then we have a meeting on Thursday to review. Where um we're proposing some cost cuts and where donations might. Um reasonably be expected to pay for some of the. Uh materials that will be used in.
Sounds like a reasonable idea to maybe scale things down a little bit to uh something that um is, you know, a cost that is more palatable to.
Well, that's that's what we're working on.
Committee and the uh eventual uh voters, right, yeah.
My my personal opinion is that the fountain can be let go.
Yes.
Just just like triple the cost once you put a water fountain there. I don't I don't know what what that deal is, but yeah, whatever is a water fountain is just like.
Yeah, but. It would, it's still going to be. If it gets funding and if it gets passed.
Cool. Alright, well, thanks, Amos. That was interesting. And you know, those kind of things are good for us to know, too. We don't always just like.
Yeah, I'll put that on.
All king, right? I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah, we'll we'll talk about that more after after Thursday's meeting, so maybe I'll put it on the next meeting as part of my update.
Yeah, it's nice to see that we're doing um a park, even if it's very um small and without a water fountain, like somewhere down there, right? I mean, we've done so much development and you think someone could find like a little bit of space to, I mean, I guess there might not be enough room for a swing, but there there's something, it's it's a start, right? So that's good.
Well, there are places to sit and all that. It's really nice.
Yeah, got you. Yeah, that, yeah, you're right. That's good. Um and the ponds are nice little spots to to hang out, too, so. Um well, alright, well, that's it there. Um anyone else have any comments before we uh move on with our evenings?
Motion to adjourn, Stetson.
Kid in second.
Okay, um all in favor? Uh Kid?
Aye.
Kid?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Stetson?
Hi.
Alright, Deshaun, I am. Okay, everyone, nice to see that we kept our power there, so I hope um everyone else in Easton gets their power back tonight.
Happy holidays, all.
Happy holidays. Happy New Year before we meet again.
Alright, we'll see you.